Well, welcome to Olentangy School Board's regular educate, uh, regular meeting. Today is February thirteenth and we're in the Olentangy Berlin Room. I love the energy in the audience tonight. I think we should have students here every time.
Yes.
It's, it's very nice, so. With that said, will you call the roll please, Mrs. Hatfield?
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mrs. Patrick?
Here.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Here.
And Dr. Weiss?
Here.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have a special treat. Um, joining us is Boy Scout Troop four twenty-eight. With them is Lori Kipfer and they will be leading us with a flag ceremony and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Color guard attention. Color guard, color guard advance. Color guard, prepare to post the colors. Color guard, post the colors. Scouts, scout hand salute. Would the audience please place their right hand over their heart? Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Scouts to. Color guard dismissed. The audience may be seated.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. It's a nice way to start. They now have a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll move.
Second.
Mrs. Hatfield, please call the roll. Is there any discussion?
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tonight, we have the pleasure of students from Oak Creek. They will be explaining their digital newspaper called the Gazette. Joining us is Amy Nyla, Naishlaus Flankenship and students from Oak Creek Elementary. Welcome.
Thank you so much for having us this evening. We're very excited. We would like to share our newspaper with you. It is something that wasn't really on my radar. We had a teacher that moved to another building that was doing a newspaper and a few of his friends came to me and asked if we could, have a newspaper. So, it's all them.
Can't miss out on that photo opportunity.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay, before we start, I'm Amy Naishlaus Flankenship and I'm the gifted intervention specialist at Oak Creek Elementary. And I'd like to introduce you to some of our very excited newspaper reporters that are fifth graders. This is Lila, Austin, Jackson, Daniel, Kayden, Will, and Huma. And they are just a small slice of about forty kids that work on our newspaper.
Wow.
Wow.
That's a lot of people.
Thank you for coming.
It all started with an idea. We want to create a newspaper to share information with the students of Oak Creek without using too much paper. The paper staff is open to all fifth graders and the publication should be available to everyone in Oak Creek. It should include information kids want to hear. All paper staff need to be able to work together using collaboration and time and give input, their voice. How can we do it? The name of our paper will chosen by vote. Meetings where we can all work face to face are before school on a few Tuesdays each month. We also have some optional recess and order lunch meetings. We decide what sections we'd like to include. Each staff member chose to work on a few departments. Our department and all information needed is in a school logi course. We can access it anytime and communicate even when we aren't together in our, in our department.
Wow.
So, this was a little exciting for us because the paper had been paper before and we wanted to kind of go green. So, in order for us to be able to work together, because there's forty of us, we came up with the idea of having a school logi course where each department has a folder. So, at any time, when a student has time to work on it, or when we come together for meetings, or if they're at home, they can work on their section and communicate back and forth with their,
Wow.
other reporters on the same department.
Our digital paper, the Oak Creek Gazette is its own school logi course. We do include video clips, how-tos, interviews, etc., surveys and contests.
With the help of Tracy Gerro, we were able to push out the paper to all students, grades two through five, and to our K through one teachers to project in their classrooms.
That was our next problem was if we're going to have a digital paper, how are we going to get it to our elementary students? Because they don't have, I mean, they have the O S D login, but they don't really have an email. Um, and they wanted to share it with all the students in the building. So, Mrs. Gerro helped actually make it into a school logi page because all of our students have access to school logi. And then for K one, they do have access, it just takes a long time for them to get on with the typing. So, we, we pushed it out, not just to all students, but also to the teachers in our building. So, K one can project a story. And then we also can make our paper as large as we want it because we have links. You know, we don't have to keep it to a certain number of pages. Thanks so much for allowing us to share.
Can we ask you some questions?
Go right ahead, they're ready.
Um, I want to know, what's a topic that you've written about that you've really enjoyed writing about?
I like to interview the teachers and learn new things that I never do about them.
I do like environmental disasters and like information about them.
I read about sports and, um,
Sports.
I help with, um, fun jokes, memes and.
I could have, I could have bet that watching you.
I did a page on twenty-one fun facts. I work with jokes, memes and games and I also edit.
Oh, nice.
I also work with jokes and memes and I do sports.
Nice. I was going to ask, do you have an editor?
Yes.
There are a few editors.
A few?
Yeah, we have a team of editors.
How about a photo, somebody that does photos for you? Do you, have you, do you post any pictures?
Oh, yes. Lots of pictures.
But mostly memes?
Actually, it, it's become, because it was, we have a structure. As students and curious students, they have made it bigger than I could have ever imagined. Because they put videos in. They'll make a how-to video and video, and video themselves creating something. They can choose a video to put in, like how to, what was one of them? I think Kayden, did you put one in, Amiwa?
Yeah.
About making sidewalk chalk.
Oh, yummy.
Yeah. And then Austin, his topic on the wildfires in California, he actually made it into an Adobe Spark video and it had music set to it.
Oh my gosh.
So, that was wonderful. And Kayden has come up with a, you know, name the picture, like come up with a photo caption for a video. And he puts a funny picture on it and then everybody would get so many responses and he picks a winner and then shares it in the next sentence.
Oh my gosh.
So, how many issues are you able to do?
Like, one, one or two every two months.
Wow, that's a lot. So, like one a month? And have you had a particular issue that got more visibility than others that was a big hit?
Yeah, it's taken the elementary mind a little bit of, it's taken them a little bit of time to understand what this actually is, to visit it. So, a lot of the fifth graders got caught on right away and they would visit the paper, the school logi course, but some of the younger ones. So, they actually went around to remind teachers to show their students or have them get on there so it becomes more routine for them.
Yes. And as you go up in grade level, at, you'll have more opportunities to do this, especially at Orange High School, when they have the TV and radio station too. Yeah, as well as the newspaper, which you guys are budding reporters. That will be great for you to get involved in.
My son at Liberty High School was a journalist for the Canon, their, their newspaper. He was also their cartoonist. As you talk about jokes, one of my favorite ones was our superintendent's first day as the principal at Liberty High School. My son did a cartoon about his first day.
Oh, that's great. That's great. We do have a cartoonist right here this evening too. Will, he, um, has made some very funny, very tongue-in-cheek cartoons that his humor is just effortless, you know? So, yeah.
So, you have some years ahead to look forward to.
Yes.
Yeah. And I love your innovative approach to this, saving trees and reaching a bunch of students. I commend you for that and thank you for coming and, and joining us this evening. Does anyone have, I'll send any questions?
Yeah, no, I'm impressed.
That's great.
Yeah.
You're welcome to stay the entire meeting, but we understand that you may have other plans.
They have a deadline. They have a deadline.
Yeah, they might have a deadline. Can't wait for Randy to get back on that. Why didn't you? That was my.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for letting me share.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Jack. Well, we'll move on to the boards, the board president report. Um, since we last met, we've had, I've attended a facilities committee. And, um, so I've previewed a little bit of what Mr. Gordon will be presenting this evening and I feel bad for him because he always has a tough act to follow. We should be a little kinder to him when we, when we schedule him. Um, we had a fantastic turnout at the sixth annual One Community Conference. The keynote speaker was Matthew Kay. Dave, I see the book, you bought it. He was fantastic. He was, I'm so disappointed that he's not a teacher in Ohio and we can stack him, but he's out of, um, I think he's Philadelphia. Philadelphia? Yeah. But he, um, he, he, his presentation was about navigating difficult conversations around diversity and inclusion. It was very eye-opening and I'd like to thank the Olentangy Education Foundation for sponsoring him. He was a great speaker. I also was able to attend, um, a session by Boal Aweng. And he was one of the lost boys of Sudan.
I did too.
It was with the middle schoolers. The topic, I think, was heavy for them. They struggled on, you know, how to interact because we really have nothing by comparison to what this man has been through. But he was six years old when he made the fifteen hundred mile journey from Kenya, or I'm sorry, from Sudan to Kenya. And, um, you know, barefoot. I think thirty-five thousand started, fifteen thousand made it. He lived in the refugee camp for fourteen years. And, um, when he, he was an artist and he didn't have much, many resources to do art with, so he painted on rocks and his, his artwork is beautiful. Um, then when he finally got his visa to come here to the United States, he was in the air about to land in New York City and nine eleven, the attacks on nine eleven happened. So, he was routed back to Kenya where he stayed there for several months before he could, um, come here. But what he, he finally made it back. I think he said after ten years of being in the United States, he didn't know if any of his family had survived, his mother and father and maybe an uncle were there. Um, their village was devastated. They, the, the soil was ruined. They weren't able to grow crops, so they had to start that over again. And the, the medical care, um, they would just meet under a tree. So, he actually came back to the, did some fundraising and they opened the Buckeye Clinic in his village of Sudan. Um, it was pretty eye-opening and put, puts things into perspective. I also was able to attend a session, what's his name? It was about microaggressions and how they impact our learning environments. It was also very interesting. He was from the city of Columbus, something Affairs. I can't hide it. Oh, he was the director of, uh, Community Affairs for City of Columbus. I did not get to see our students, so I'm hoping Mr. Rafe, you're going to tell us about a link where we can see their presentations. Um, I had to leave for Kentucky. But also, since we last met, Lakisha was asked to join the students at Orange High School for their Black History Assembly. Did you want to share any of that with us?
Yes, um, it was delayed. It was supposed to be Friday, but it's no day. So, it was actually held on Monday. And, uh, what it was, or what it is, is, um, they have two clubs, diversity clubs that come together face to face and Black Empowerment. Um, and they put on the Black History Program and they've been doing this every year. I believe it's five years that they've been doing this. Um, they, the theme is based on the national theme, which is African-Americans, the vote and women suffraging, suffrage. And so, they just did this timeline of, um, from the fifteen, fifteenth amendment, nineteenth amendment, kind of the debate with that, into the women's suffrage. They even had like marching, the signs, they were, they had picketing. Um, that, and they, they played some clips too, um, with the Woolworth counter, with segregation. Um, they played that and then, um, up until the present moment and I had the opportunity to be their present moment. And it was set up like a, a historical black college/university. Um, and one of the students played the professor and, um, where he, um, the students, they were asking me questions. And the questions, you know, were like about the board, um, and then just with me coming to the board. So, it was, it was neat and, I mean, I did it four times. So, the fourth time, you know, you're not so nervous. But, um, but it was great. They wrote the script for this. I mean, the work that they put into it was awesome. Very nice.
We have, we have some amazing kids in this district. And, and they also talked about registering to vote.
Yes.
Which our high schools are doing, um, which is very important with our March seventeenth ballot issue. We need, we need our students registered and hopefully they will exercise their rights.
Right.
To do that. Um, I also wanted to turn things over to Julie. She has, um, I'm going to give her Board Member of the Month award because she has been, I, I don't know if you've slept, you've, you've provided our community with, uh, great information. And most recently, the school funding pose that, that the district has also released today in an email. If you could share some of that with us, we'd appreciate it.
Uh, school funding has become a passion of mine since, uh, the fourth grade, actually. And, um, so I've just taken it upon myself to educate myself on the mess that we call state school funding here in, in Ohio. Um, and so today, uh, the school district sent out, um, information that I had provided on my, um, school, school board Facebook page about the fight for fair funding. And it has been a, a fight, a multi-year fight. I don't want people to think that it's something that we just started last year. Um, it has been a, a long, drawn-out process of just even advocating, uh, members of the Ohio House and Senate about the fact that there are public schools in the state that don't even get the same amount of state funding that our private schools are getting. Um, and just that education process alone has taken years, um, to get to the point where now people kind of know that yes, private schools do get more money than thirty other school districts, public school districts in the state. And we're one of them. And the fact that there, the state says it costs six thousand twenty dollars to educate one child, that's an average child. That, that's no bells and whistles, but there's no data that backs up that where that six hundred and, six thousand and twenty dollars even, even comes from. So, if you took that six thousand and twenty dollars and multiplied it by all of our students, we, you know, we should be getting over a hundred and twenty-nine million dollars to, to fund our schools. But that's not how education works in Ohio. There's the belief that, yes, it might take a hundred and twenty-nine million to educate children in the school district, but the community needs to contribute too. And so, how much that community contributes is based on the school funding formula. And they look at things like property value and they look at things like median income, but they don't take into consideration a growth that a district might have, which is what we experience and have been experiencing for the last twenty years. So, when you feed all the information through the school funding formula that I don't even think any of our top math teachers could explain to you, um, you get spit out a number of fifty-five million. And that fifty-five million is what we should be getting from the state according to the state school funding formula. But again, there's another catch and that, that's capped. And we have been a capped school district for as long as I, I can remember, which means the state says we should be getting fifty-five million, but they can't afford to give us fifty-five million. So, they come up with some kind of percentage and says, okay, you have to live with this. This year, it's just a little over twelve million dollars. So, we go from over a hundred and twenty-nine million that the, that we should get if we got six thousand and twenty dollars per pupil, to what the funding formula says, we can afford to pay, which is fifty-five million. And then it comes down again to the capped amount, which is just a little over twelve million dollars that we're supposed to educate all twenty-two thousand students in our school district. And so, I just wanted to educate people, uh, you know, on that, on the, on the whole process and let them know, we continue to fight, the good fight at the State House for additional funding, um, for Olentangy. Um, you know, I, I know we want a lot of people to, you know, go in there today. Well, we can't go in there today because it's not a priority today at the State House. The priority was last year and now we'll wait again until the budget again will be next year. And so, we have to be strategic in any plan that we take to the State House because there are a lot of people wanting a lot of things of our elected officials. And so, while I understand the frustration, because we all feel the frustration, um, I just want people to know that there is a, there's a strategic plan in place and we will release that plan, but we're going to need a lot of voices, um, when it is time for us to go back again to our, our members of the House and Senate and then eventually the governor to say, hey, you have been passing us over for years. We just cannot do this anymore. We cannot continue, um, on the pathway that, that we have where we're only getting six hundred and forty dollars per pupil to educate all the students in our school district. And so, I hope that you take the time, um, to read the, the email that went out from the district and I'm always happy to answer any questions. But, um, in doing some of my research, there's a slide, can you put the slide up? We always talk about how much we spend per pupil and people constantly saying, well, you're, you're coming back to us. You're coming back to us for more money and more money and more money. It, I, I can truly tell you, it's not a, a spending problem. We run a very lean ship here. Um, we have a, an administrator to student ratio that's one eighty-nine to one, when the state's average is a hundred and thirty-five to one. You know, we're not top-heavy. We're lean, we're running a tight ship. We don't offer all-day, everyday kindergarten. We don't have swimming pools in our schools. We don't offer every student a computer like surrounding school districts do. You know, but we offer a high-quality educational prac, um, um, educational product here. And I want to throw these up. This is what other school districts in the state that we compare to on an academic level, not necessarily a size level, because we are like six thousand students bigger than the, than the other, than the biggest school district on here, which is Dublin.
If you take Dublin off that list, that we're bigger than, we, our total student population is, is bigger than everybody.
Than everybody else on here, combined.
You combine.
Um, so this I grabbed from Mason. When I started getting involved in the school districts, it, what Mason was growing at the pace that we're, we're growing, they were growing really fast. And we were always watching what Mason was doing. Um, and so, um, they stopped growing and we kept, continued to grow. Um, but they're on the ballot now in March and so are we. And so, they produced this bit of information. And as you can see, we spend the least amount of money than these school districts that are comparable, um, academic-wise. Um, so these are the school districts that we're always battling back and forth who's the top academic-wise in the state. Um, but this is what we're spending. We, I, I put this information out last night to a naysayer and, uh, he said, wow, we really do have a really good return on investment. And so, for me, that's a win, um, for us. But if you could just spread the word, truly, 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 we make decisions here, financial decisions that we hope are not impacting our students. Um, they're mindful decisions. We're mindful of the taxes that our, our residents are paying. It is truly not, in my mind, a spending problem. It's a funding problem. And it's going to, we're going to get it fixed, but the cavalry is not coming today. So, that's why we're on the ballot on March eighteenth. We need, there's two reasons, lack of state funding and explosive growth. So, if you could share that information, um, we would greatly appreciate it and any of us can answer any of these questions. But, um, you know, I'll put our school district up against any of these and so I know Mr. Rafe will too. Um, it's a quality product and, and it, and it's worth supporting.
Well, thank you. Okay, Mr. Rafe, are you, uh, that concludes the president's report. We'll take your superintendent report now, please.
All right. Well, um, good evening. Thank you all for being here.
Mrs. Kipfer, as always, thank you for your participation and support. They're hosting a coffee chat coming up. Usually our highest-attended in-house coffee chat.
A week from tonight, I think.
That's a lot of pressure.
Yeah, that's all right. So, it's a biggie pack on what Mindy said, the one in community conference was, was outstanding. I really, um, Jackie Merkel and, um, Heather Cole do, just do a great job organizing that. And Peggy and the whole curriculum team really does, uh, it's all hands on deck. They pull it off. Um, Jack has sent you an email with all the links, so you'll have that if you want to see all the, all the presentations that were made. Um, so I hope you enjoy that. You know, we had, again, I think it was over six hundred people, um, sign up to attend. So, that was, it was, it was a great event and I'm really proud that we continue, continue to do that conference and also very proud of the work we're doing, um, across the board with our inclusive excellence, uh, strategic objective or initiative. Um, got good news last week that Tyler Run Elementary School is one of fourteen schools in Ohio. That's the, Ohio can nominate fourteen schools to the National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence, uh, for the National Blue Ribbon School of Excellence Award. Um, and Tyler Run was nominated. Uh, the criteria was repeatedly high performance. Uh, there's a couple of different criteria. There could be growth criteria, but Tyler Run was, uh, nominated for repeatedly high performance, uh, across the board there. So, um, they have to go through the nomination process. They have to submit an application. They have to go through this spring's testing. And, uh, hopefully they won't get a testing glitch like poor Mr. Meyer experienced at Orange High. Because they, Orange, Orange should be a blue ribbon school. The state changed the criteria and he's, he's not bitter about it still. I don't bring it up to him too often. But, um, we look forward to them, uh, joining the ranks of, uh, Freedom Trail Elementary that was a blue ribbon, uh, award last year. Uh, Olentangy High was awarded a blue ribbon in nineteen ninety-nine, uh, Liberty High in two thousand nine, and then Scioto Ridge in two thousand fifteen, sixteen. So, uh, we did our next, second round of spring athletic signing. And remember, we had the Division One football signing dates came across on, um, December first. This is the other National Letter of Intense Signing Day, so there are students from all of our schools. And then also want to throw out a shout-out to, uh, the Berlin High Gymnastics, uh, team who, uh, captured the, the school's very first league title. So, congratulations to them. Um, and as you know, in the spring, once we get all the division, all the rest of the signings, Division Three schools and late commits and all those things, we'll do another signing ceremony in the spring. So, we are pushing hard to get all of our residents out there registered to vote. The last date is, uh, February eighteenth, so we encourage everybody to, um, get registered and exercise their right to vote. So, um, and obviously, as everyone knows, we do have a very important ballot issue, um, coming up March seventeenth. And we are still hot on the, the coffee chat trail. I think, I, I think I counted it up. We're pushing. Emily and I are, and we're actually, we're dividing and conquering now because Monday night we had three, um,
Oh my gosh.
informational events. So, Emily and Todd were at, uh, Orange Athletic Boosters and on Monday and then on Tuesday. And then I flew solo at a couple of coffee chats and, uh, Jack did Allen Creek PTO, so, um, it's, it's busy. I think we still, I, I don't, I won't tell you how many I counted up between now and March seventeenth. We did two on Sunday. Emily and I did two, two on Sunday. So, well, every Sunday's booked. So every Sunday's booked, actually this, except for this Sunday. So just want to get out and share the good wor, you know, people say, it must be, it just must be such a, so, so taxing. I said, you know, the reality is, once we get there, all it is is an opportunity to brag about our schools. We've got a great story to tell. So, you know, it is, it does get a little bit, you start going, oh, not another one, you feel like a little bit like a hamster on a wheel. But once we get there and we just start telling, telling our story, I leave every, every time very energized. So just want to highlight one action item there. We have Steve Little, who's been a longtime PE teacher at Olentangy High School, is retiring. Steve was a head baseball coach for a lot of years, took Olentangy to a state final. They lost the state final to Strongsville that year. I, I always remember his quote in the paper. He made a pitching change and he, his quote in the paper was, you know, "I really didn't make many decisions with this team because the kids were so good all year and decided to make one decision in the sixth inning of the state championship game and look what happened." So he just totally took the blame for his relief pitcher kind of blowing up, but I respect him for that. So, and then we just have few, there's our, our dates coming up. Again, it's always, we have professional development. Again, the curriculum team's got a great program planned for tomorrow. As we know, we back these up with, usually with holidays to give the community a long, long weekend. 27th's our next board meeting. And then we already got, end of third quarter. Crazy. How many subdates between now and then, Ms. Kipfer?
Just about every day.
Any questions?
No, we just want to say thank you for your tireless efforts, you and Emily and Jack and Todd.
Crystal.
All hands on deck.
Rest, rest this Sunday.
The social, the, the communications team, I think, you know, has got a great plan. We're putting out good information. And it's all hands on deck to provide information.
I, I think it's probably 24/7 right now and we appreciate it. Mrs. Hapfield, the treasurer's report, please.
Yes, absolutely. So we just want to start by, to reiterate what Mark said about the coffee chats. You know, it is, it's a long schedule, but it's so nice to meet the community members and provide them information. They're very engaging and I think that they're appreciative of the information as much as we're appreciative for the opportunity to get in front of them and connect. So it's been a good experience. We're very happy to do it. In terms of what we have on the board agenda for this evening, we have the rates and valuations as certified by the Delaware County Auditor for approval this evening. The vote, just as a reminder, the voted millage rate remains at 84.3 mils, but our effective millage rate for, on residential or Class I property is reduced to 53.46, which means that it's about an $8.53 decrease on $100,000 valuation. And then in terms of the values coming in, they are very close to what we had forecasted in the October forecast. We're only about $52 million off from our forecast, which sounds like a big number, but it's .01% of where we were in total valuation. So we're very happy that we were pretty on point with that, which means that all of our future planning that we've been doing for this levy is on point as well. So we're excited to be able to share that. And this letter is really a formality, just to make sure that we are certifying that and having it on record that, we know that that's what our effective rate will be for the coming year. So we'll have that for your vote tonight. And that's all I have. Are there any questions?
When do the, the collections, does that get reported around March?
Yes, well, we are collecting advances right now on the 2019 taxes. Those will usually finish mid-February, end of the month. So we'll have final numbers at least no later than March to be able to tell where our delinquencies or any other Board of Revision impacts landed that valuation. So they, thank you for bringing that up. They are on the paperwork that is attached to the agenda. They are stated at full valuation without any of those adjustments. So they could be adjusted a little bit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any public participation this evening?
No, we do not.
Okay, we'll move into our discussion items. Jeff Gordon, please join us for an update on the five-year improvement plan.
Good evening. I will, this, this is a next step of the plan that we looked at last fall, going from adding 2024 into that forecast. Some of the important things to note when you look at the top section in the blue is the bond, the bond projects that were scheduled on the 2016 bond, that were bus replacements, additional buses, some roofing repairs. That funding will drop off of this in 2022 through 2024. You see the top of that becomes blank and that's important. I'm pointing that out because when you look at the PI portion at the bottom in the white, you'll see that that impacts. So the funding that we're currently doing updates with on the bond, when that drops off, then will all be funded through PI. And when we add more items into that, that line below, those costs get split and brought down. So you'll see what that impact is in 2022. When we decrease the bond, we still have to continue to update the buses for safety purposes. You keep the buses as updated as possible and less repairs that way as well. And that takes us into having to impact the PI budgets. You see the technology drop there. The two big ones in the, in the line for PI are technology and the asphalt. So those are the areas that get hit the biggest with smaller pieces decreased in other lines. But again, when that stuff drops off the bond and moves into the PI side, you see where that impact is and those decrease. And with the district our size, that continues to be tough to manage as we, we are strategically placing those funds for repairs and replacements throughout and, and on this, this five-year assessment. Items for this year, just to note real quick that we do have is, as we continue to add buses and items over at the West Transportation Center, we are going to expand the restrooms there. They actually have a couple less stalls in each of the restrooms there as compared to the other, other bus garage and based on the amount of people using that, coming in and out daily at a pretty large amount of time. They're pretty regular that when buses come back, you have a short period of time that in-between routes and drives are trying to get through and get back out on the routes. We're going to make that adjustment. And that was on, we started that process last year, looking at what we wanted to do there and how we could, how we could update that. So that is on for the summer as well as we have some, a couple of track projects. You see the asphalt budget is continued and then interior and exterior finishes are the other big items on there. All of that is normal and, and has not changed from what we have discussed previously when, so we did this last year, it was 2019 through 2023. And this is just an adjustment for, the projects really for this year on the 2020 line have not changed from what we've discussed before. With that, I asked you, any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Does this plan have any forecast in it for if the bond, or if the permanent improvement passes in March? Or is this just using the money that we know that we have today?
This is using existing current money that we know we have today. But I would be very happy for a successful levy and update that.
Okay.
Could you get us additional detail behind the technology spend?
Yes, I can work with, Mr., I think Mr. Sexton does a technology update at some point through.
Kind of a mix of hardware, software, servers. What's $1.9 million get us?
Yeah, yeah, there's, there is a breakdown. I'm, I'm sure that we can bring that forward. It was part, there was a, a bit of a breakdown on the, the capital plan update in the fall, that 20-year. There was a breakout on there of what those items, many of those items include. Not all of the items on that were on, on here, the 1.9. There were some that were general fund and leases and equipment, but that breakdown's there and I'm sure we can get something further for you as well.
What's included in the safety and security towards the bottom of the sheet?
Those are, so safety and security are really any safety, security measures if it's maybe adding door swipes onto a building for easier access or other items that we've dropped off. Could be security cameras. You see at the top, we have a big security camera upgrade, but there are servers and other things that we, we will update from time to time or licenses we may have to buy or anything really involved in safety. If you look down at the life safety equipment, that's $15,000 this year. That life safety equipment could be an update of a fire system or a, you know, a panel, a fire panel or burglar system or some other item that way that's with the, for the life safety equipment that we put in the building when it's installed. The others are really updates or changes.
And just for clarification, because it was out there, there is no covered parking at Hyatt's Middle School, is that correct?
There is not. There is not. What was on the bond was an expansion of the parking area around the, the building and the, the athletic stadium, which was, is very little parking there, so.
Did you say the bus lane?
Yeah, the bu, the bus lane, expansion of the bus lane. There were two separate items, but the parking lot was listed separate. So since it was listed separate, I could see how somebody could mistake that as a separate project, but it was not any, was not a parking garage by any means.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Wright?
Good evening, everyone. Very briefly, want to bring to you a request for an approved or an amendment to our approved district calendar from April 25th of 2019. It was brought to our attention that in September of 2020, on our approved calendar, what we believed to be, or what we had set as our professional development day, which always aligns with the first Monday of the fair, we have on our approved calendar as Monday, September 14th. It's been pointed out to us that we were off by a week and that the fair and our professional development day should be on Monday, September 21st. So we have presented a new calendar with this correction. Everything else that was approved in April, in April of 2019 has stayed the same. We're just asking you to approve an amended calendar. Any questions?
I was, I was at the chamber dinner, sitting at the table with two employees from the fair, and I said, hey, did you change the dates? And they said, it's a leap year.
So I think that's what it was, that we, we played it forward and then everything got thrown off.
That's one day, not a week.
And so everything moved by two days instead of the typical one and that's what bounced it off. So I think their original webs, website originally had it on the 14th when we started preparing for this over a year ago. And so we've, we've been corrected.
Well, we know how much you pride yourself when the calendar is set, so I'm sorry it had to be amended, but I think we can approve that.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yep. Mrs. Hapfield, will you please present the treasurer action items?
Yes, please. I would like to present Treasurer Action Item A. Approve the amount and rates as certified by the Delaware County Auditor, please.
I'll take a motion.
I move.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Rafe, will you please present the superintendent action items?
Yes, ma'am. I'd like to present Superintendent Action Items A through G for approval.
May I have a motion?
Yes.
A second?
I'll second. Or Dave Brey, doesn't matter.
Okay.
Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
I failed to point out, I think I counted 20 volunteers going to the Washington DC trips that we're approving.
Thank you. Okay, now I will, I will take a motion to go into executive session as permitted by Section 121.222 of the Ohio Revised Code to consider the employment of public employees. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mrs. Wagner Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Weiss?
Yes.
And Mrs. Patrick?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for joining us. We will meet here again on February 27th and we will return tonight only to adjourn. Thank you.